Six o'clock, we'll call the meeting's order. First order of business is the pledge to the flag.
Let us pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll review and include the minutes of January eighth.
So.
Motion on the second. Any discussions? Student none, although in favor. It's a good look. Member reports, we start with Vinsey. Wrong, nothing. Justin and Fattah know it's not me for the meeting. So we'll jump right into the town and the report.
All right, at the last meeting, I told you that we had one CD that was mature and in fact, there was two CDs that were mature and they were days of each other. But that was a little over two million. Then we were looking to reinvest, so we renegotiated a slightly higher rate with Skargen and with Franklin, so that's a four point one APR on a five month term, so that would generate about thirty six thousand in interest as opposed to twenty nine just sitting in our standard accounts. Those are earning three, three, five as of today, so not bad there, but honestly, it's to the point right now where when these two mature, they should be held separately. I think we probably want to look at issuing an RFP to create more competitive market. They, when you get two million dollars, it's somebody's just saying, I'm gonna leave it there. It's a difficult thing to take a standard break, so. Anyway, that's the deal. The CD renewals. Your investments update, Matt Libby's asked to be on your schedule for March fifth, so that'll be the first meeting after town meeting with the new board. Your year-to-date return is one point oh two percent, so the question we're obviously gonna have.
As they might be able to get better benefit.
TikTok, baby. The question, I think, that he's gonna have to answer for us is why don't we divest with him and just invest in traditional mechanisms like CD or money market where we're making three, four, five percent? So, I mean, it's two and a half million dollars sitting over there, and I know we committed to the long term, but
It hasn't been anything yet.
We have to talk about reality. No, I mean, we're up, but we're not up the way that we should be, Matt. So, the fire department, we received notice from the Forest Service that they were successful in their annual forestry grant. That's gonna purchase new forest, repump as well as accessories and attachments, two hundred feet worth of hose and chainsaw PPE, the volume on that's thirteen twenty-one, and that requires a local match as well. The bridge newsletter, that was supposed to be the printers already, but that's actually sitting across the hall for edit, and I'm gonna make revisions in the morning. We held that back to include things about the gazebo proposal, which we didn't have the full picture until last night, as well as the new community engagement proposal that the budget committee reviewed last night as well. So I wanted to make sure we had good information in there about public hearings, about the background, the forty eight thousand dollar explanation on the funding piece for that position not being the full one hundred percent, but seventy-five percent. That's all part of the important transparent process that we're here, so that's been held. We'll see that hopefully by February first. Dog licenses, the same old, same old, but that twenty five dollar late fee is gonna take effect on the first waste management fees. Those are up, sorry, those are down for December, about twenty thousand versus previous year. But when you look at the total year, we're looking at up three point three percent, forty four thousand dollars there, so looking at trends, the last couple of months, we've been down, and the fact of the matter is is that they have goals in terms of landfilling goals and the tonnage that comes through the gate, so we're expecting four hundred and fifty thousand tons on average each year, and so that's gonna be about stable. Obviously, there's some fluctuation with their new assets coming online, but that's about where we are. We're also at a point in our contract where the value increases by three percent each year. Now, it's an agreed upon CPI until it reaches five dollars, which can, time that will reduce to one percent increase annually, so it is a slump, but it's their corporate adjustment as to getting on par with what they wanna bring in for tonnage, so that seems to be pretty good. Liquor license approved, not the one I thought was gonna be approved, but six pin jug came in for a renewal. They're on card assistance, so that will be included in the record tonight in accordance with your last policy at the last meeting. General assistance program, which is our municipal welfare that's reimbursed in part by the state. We finally are going to be audit this morning for the last twelve months with no major findings, so that is all good and well. Town meeting, that's on schedule. After tonight, I should have all that I need to finalize the ballot and get it over the bridge up, and so the first week of February, dial to you from available. We're also building out a section on the website, which will be hyped a link to this document, and also access right from the homepage, which will include information from voters. There will be the warrant, which is always there, the copy of the proposed shoreline zoning ordinance, the draft description of the position, and other things that will be relevant, so people have that one stock truck. So hopeful that that will be beneficial to the process there as well. Out to the airport, we've had a note on the place, which is the notice to airmen, which is usually documented hazard, whether it's weather conditions or another obstacle. In this case, it's construction for trees, which has existed for now a number of years since before we did the clearing. Ken Morgan was able to get in touch with former hangar owner Bill Drury, who lives down in Belgrade, he's a retired attorney, who said he wants to be involved in volunteer time to help the airport, so he has no direct interest in it, and he's pounding pavement for us, so he's been contacting FAA, SAPI, who is involved in the clearing project, GCA, logging, all of these entities trying to get the note cleared in terms of the instrument approach on runway fifteen that gets posted every week, so that's beneficial to us, and we're appreciative of his time. He's also, when he's done with this, he's gonna be taking on our hangar lease, and that's not obviously a legal opinion, but he's going to provide us with some suggestions that makes to look into to protect both the town, the airport, and hangar owners, so looking forward to that, and we appreciate Ken making that connection for us and Bill's time there. Next Friday, we're gonna be down naturally just to one clerk in the front office, starting next week. That was delayed a week, but as a result of this training, there's a bunch of things like that, we're oftentimes gonna be having to close. The one thing that's on the schedule is next Friday, the noon, the mandatory D and V training, and that's related to plate issuance, the tree or no tree plates, and how we process that. That's next Friday at noon time. And then, don't forget those Thursday evening hours are not gonna happen indefinitely until we get back to full staff, eight thirty-four Monday through Friday. Library trustees are meeting next week, which is a week later than usual. Your planning board, unless something comes up, which I don't expect it will be, they're just gonna meet in March after the election. Your next meeting is back on schedule, so it's February the fifth, and TIF committee, that consolation notice is gonna go up in the morning, but their next meeting will be scheduled fourth February, twenty fifth. The one thing that didn't make the cut this afternoon was fire call yesterday afternoon, last night, and that was a structure fire in Fairfield. That Fairfield was called out too, it took a lot of our resources. Our fire department was then called for station coverage in Fairfield. Not in fifty years do we have a memory of being called for station coverage in another community and then being told for a structure fire in that community. So yesterday, while Noradawg was covering a Fairfield station, they received a tone to go to a structure fire in Benton, and it was North on Fire, that was actually the first department that was on scene for the fire in Benton. So that is the power of mutual aid, that is what comes and what goes, and we are fortunate to have been able to assist with the folks that we did, but also grateful for the folks with their ladders and everything else to come into town when we need them, so those are the costs that we incurred as a part of fire department that we don't ever know, but it goes both ways, and so there's an article in the paper tomorrow that underscores our involvement. We struggled with aid, so I wanted to be aware of that, and you need a situation there.
I have a question with that. If we're covered in the station, do we still have enough people that are back here to cover everything in Noradawg, or do we just go, how did that work?
This Somerset County Mutual Aid Agreement requires us, that we're signatories of, and so is every other department in the county, requires us to respond, but only to the extent which we can while maintaining coverage in our own town, so an alternative to that, if it was really bad, we could have sent more and had New Sharon or Smithfield or somebody come in and back to us. We didn't have to do that. We sent three, we kept five.
Okay.
And we had a couple others that we knew that were available. So we still had plenty of coverage and
Yeah.
You know, it also depends on where the fire is, 'cause we knew we could call Madison, 'cause they weren't involved, we knew we could call New Sharon, we knew we could call Smithfield, none of them were involved in that southern fire yesterday, fires yesterday, so.
Okay.
All right. Moving forward here. Discussion action on January twenty second, general warrant number two.
May that we approve our warrant number two in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and eight cents.
Second, motion on the second. Any discussion?
What's elevated salon for fifty five hundred?
That is the TIF facade improvement.
Someone getting pretty, we didn't like.
Need a second?
Just anything else on a discussion? Anybody else have anything on a discussion?
I've just received as long.
No, I hadn't either.
Yeah.
Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? Is everybody? Discussion action on January twenty second, airport warrant number one.
Move to approve airport warrant number, what's it, number one, number one, in about twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second, motion on the second. Any discussion?
The runway lighting upgrade budget, are we getting money back from that, or is that just?
We'll get the ninety-five percent back. That was an independent fee assessment, so we get a firm to come in and then tell us what it should cost us to have this project again in the year. It's going through our consultant who's required, so we pay that kind of like gave to be reimbursed by FAA in the year two.
So all of these, like, this is like their budget, and we just pay for all of this stuff, like, they don't have, like, an operating budget to cover this stuff, like, they don't have reserve accounts, we have everything else?
Those checks today come out of the airport account. We front payroll and a few other miscellaneous expenses and then three coupons. But anything that you see on the airport warrant is coming back out of the airport checkbook.
Okay.
When it comes to larger bills, it would be reimbursed, we pull all those bills and wait until the last minute to get reimbursed, but we'll pay.
Folks will break even there? For the airport, yes?
Clothes is all relative. It's year end, so we're gonna be taking another look at it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody. Number eight, discussion action on January twenty second. Sore commitment.
Move to approve the sore commitment in the amount of twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Second, motion on the second, any discussion?
This is a higher than normal amount, largely due to, I think, maybe heat pipes and whatnot, but we'll see some amendments from this, but we at the end of there, it's what we've received, we watered this first.
Why, but do we know where the heat pipes are? Why would we remember?
Yep, I'm pretty good at pipes, burst pipes, things like that. I had somebody just this morning email me and said I had a pipe in my basement, looked, my water usage was up, and I'd be like, my water usage was up, but I went to look, I gotta grab a basement. So they have to fill out the application, and then I'll review it, and typically, under normal circumstances, I'll look back the last eight quarters and average that out and give them the difference once.
Makes sense. Okay. Anything else on discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? That's everybody. Public comment? Anything for public comment? Seeing nothing for public comment, we'll move forward. The number ten, discussion action on bid award for Wilder Hill Road construction.
We have the bid award recommendation from our engineer from Haley Ward. We received seven proposals for projects out of Wilder Hill, this is the one right near Route Two, headed down with the cemetery, Logan was providing the data. They are the folks that give the State River Road project as well as the Tower of Rile Road, and that is the recommendation of the firm to accept their proposal.
Move to accept the proposal from the dart. Excavation.
There's a motion.
A second.
There's a second. Anything on the discussion? Seeing nothing.
The only thing I have, the Nickerson is local.
They will look, they came in at four thirty.
It's not with the it's, it's over that percentage, right, that we give for the
It is. The other fact that theirs were working with federal dollars.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. All those in favor? That's everybody. Number eleven, discussion action on resignation. You have a letter of resignation with Margaret O'Connell from the planning board.
Move to accept the resignation of Margaret O'Connell. Second.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Is everybody? On number twelve, discussion action on proposed amendments to Shoreland zoning ordinance.
We don't have a five to eleven hands.
I know you have a book. This is an approximately eighty page ordinance that is very similar to the Shoreland zoning ordinance that was in place before. It was older, it was not indirectly complying to the state statute and regulations, so Haley Cog Consulting came in, worked the planning board deferment. The net zero for everybody is it did not get stricter, in fact, it got less restrictive.
Well, surely that may not solve your, your thing.
Well, the planning board believes that the holders of Noradawg want a less restriction in terms of land use development with more restriction, and so when they were posed any opportunity to make things less or more restrictive, they unanimously went into less restriction. The only thing that was really substantive, I'll say, that was removed was the regulation of pier stocks, and it points an intrusion into a body of water, so those would be docks upon the river, and because we don't have any great ponds, it allowed for us to remove that as a point of regulation, so that was in the old one, and it's not in the proposed.
So we don't have anything that's kind of like a highlight reel of like everything that's different, I mean, like I don't know.
There will be a red line document, and there'll be a high level, but there weren't, aside from that, there were no substantive changes to the ordinance. It was a lot of updating references to statute. They referenced in the previous ordinance specific documents or publications from the state of Maine, so a lot of that language was or as maybe amended, or enforced at the time. Chuckie, do you wanna speak to this at all? It wasn't a terribly substantive review.
No, it just spoke.
It was just bringing things current, and then once they reviewed the table of review authority, you came, what was it, with box fifteen, which was piers, docks, and things like that, and the state allows you to not regulate those, and so the board elected not to regulate those.
So there can be any docks anywhere now in the river?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no standard so if anyone can stick anything in there that could not be put in the right way, that could just break loose sort of thing, like a
We're not gonna regulate whether or not it's installed properly or not.
And we use.
This has to be temporary, right? I mean, you can't go constructing a pier into the river, can you? The town, Noradawg will not regulate that.
Nobody, you would end up going through the state.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We, but obviously, if something was poorly installed, it would find its way to Skargen and be owned.
Right, right.
We hope we're not.
Temporary.
Just letting them away.
Right, alright. But I, I mean, across the board, if there was a discussion about, do you want to add the restriction, or do you want to pull it off? Beans or what?
No. Keep it on.
Right.
And did this address any issues that we had with, we had a you know, the concrete company that was like, is this a structure, is it not a structure, is there does this is, is it exactly the same, like, what makes a structure, what doesn't make a structure, 'cause that seemed to be like a big source of contention for.
Correct, so, yes, they, that definition is unchanged. That is the definition that's provided by the state. DEP regulates definition of a structure within the Shoreland Zone. It's the, it's the definition of a structure under the local ordinance, being your cycling review ordinance that doesn't match up with the state definition of structure.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do for something like that, where it was just like concrete blocks with like a you know, a prairie, I was gonna try to like top on it, make that.
No, because it was commercial in the Shoreland Zone, that is defined as a structure. If that was outside the Shoreland Zone, it would not be a structure under our local ordinance.
And the shoreline zone for river is just fifty feet from the river, it's not like on a lake or something like that, it's different on the river, isn't it?
It's mapped in terms of what's covered, the type of zone that it's in, and then it's pretty much a seventy-five foot buffer, but it's regulated, it's still up to two hundred and fifty, and it depends upon the nature of your improvement.
Alright. Do you need anything on that?
So, yes, the motion would be to approve and sign the office, municipal office's certification of official text of a proposed ordinance for the twenty twenty-five amendments to the town of Noradawg Shoreland Zone ordinance.
Okay.
There's a motion, a second, and there's a second. Any further discussion on that?
I just feel like I don't know what we had versus what this is. I know that it's minimal, but like, I feel like changing something when I honestly really don't know what to change, I feel like that's a bit hard when it comes to, for me, anyway, I, I don't know. I wish that I had more time to read the eighty-five and know exactly what was different.
We would be pulled off.
Or could it be, could we table it till we have the highlights?
So, I would recommend certifying the language of the ordinance today. And I I would recommend certifying the language of the ordinance today so that we can move forward, we warrant a town meeting, and we're getting absentee ballots out, and then if you don't particularly care for the language of the planning board unanimously recommended to you, then you can vote it down at town meeting.
This, this has to go to, we
Approved and then it goes to town meeting.
That's correct. That's fine, the rush, okay. Alright.
Okay, so is the motion the second?
I mean, I'm, I'm in the business of BS, I'd love to see the red line, but the town voted people onto the planning board who did their due diligence, looked it over, and gonna press Richard and that
I agree, yes.
There weren't any substantial changes other than the one he named.
And Charlie.
And Chuckie. Thanks, Chuckie.
Alright, so all those in favor? That's everybody. Number thirteen, discussion action on twenty twenty-five budget.
Okay, so this should be pretty cut dry unless you want to go back and change anything that you have talked about already, but after the budget committee meeting last night, here's where we are. The difference between their recommendation and your recommendation, the first you are aware is the capital reserves account. They're recommending, excuse me, five thousand dollars less than you. Relatively minimal there.
Where did they, did they take it from one department or spread out? Was there one, like, just one?
It was just one.
Where'd they try to take it from?
It was one capital reserve.
Yes. I just don't know if they took it from, where are they taking it from? Parks, where are they trying to get it from?
Oh, it was cemetery, sorry, cemetery, cemetery capital reserve. And the thought was that they were, was they were, they have thirty-five thousand already, they want fifteen. I had recommended ten, and the budget committee recommended, but I had recommended the ten thousand.
Yeah, we, she came and we didn't recommend it.
One, right, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm obsessed. And I, I mean, I know, me, I still stand by what we came with the decree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, since the other major takeaway from their meeting last night was that the board, the only four members present, so they voted three to one against the gazebo proposal. They voted three to one against the new community position proposal. So they eliminated that hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for the budget. Then they went and they eliminated, they reduced the amount of waste management offset by a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Seems like a random number.
It's the, it's the value of the gazebo plus new position budget.
Oh, okay.
So, that's why I ended up at the one twenty-three less, so they actually have, their budget proposed is eighteen thousand dollars over last year, which is five thousand, the difference is in the capital reserves, because they backed up the expense and backed up the revenue. The one thing that this has the potential to do, when I discussed it with them last night, is that town meeting, if you move through and you approve the gazebo and or the employee position, and then you don't adjust revenues, we could be in a pickle. So if we approve the gazebo and we approve the new position, and then we accept the budget committee recommendation on revenues, taxes going up. Not a huge amount per person, but they're going up, so it's gonna be important that we, interested parties, help taxpayers and voters at the meeting understand, we'll have, we'll know what the gazebo is, that's gonna happen on the floor, we'll know because we're repeating what's gonna happen with the new position, so that by the time we get to revenues, we'll be able to explain that to folks if it needs.
Is there a way to put like an asterix in the warrant that like the select board recommends this based on that?
It would be Richard explaining during town meeting.
But they do that anyways, and so they recommend a slot and recommend this to the planning board, I mean, the planning.
But not tied, but not tied is what
Right.
you're saying.
Yeah, like, yeah, well, how the recommendations felt like if they do vote down whatever, but then the floor like is leaning one way with revenues, like how can we express? This was dependent on them.
You're gonna make a hand in this one.
Okay, yeah.
Because other than that, you have too many situational, oh, the gazebo approved with new position, and the position did, and this one and for folks to understand the impact of the revenue offset of the expenses.
Okay.
Artificially deflated taxes per year.
I think that's, that's what it, it comes down to, I think that if we are taking on these additional expenditures, I mean, some point, like, things are gonna have to go up because of that, and I think that always using the waste management stuff, is that always the right thing to do? I mean, maybe if we do these additional things, it does, you know, the ten bucks that someone else actually has to pay, like, maybe that needs to be what comes along with a lot of these new things, so that people understand like the actual value of it.
And that's the discussion that folks need to have, and the thought that folks need to have for town meeting, to understand how they want to allocate revenues. So that's where that came from.
Yeah.
So that's all I've got, unless you folks have any changes to what you.
So they, so they put anybody knockable with that.
But I'm told.
So they voted. I like the fact that there's a difference, I
Yeah, me too.
Be a good discussion, and I, I stick up to the hour.
I can't, so we voted that. It's been the first time in a long time they've bucked anything, have they?
No, they must not have.
Yeah. I have no issue with that.
So you only had four members of the budget committee out of seven?
Well, that's right, so on number fourteen here, discussion action on twenty twenty-five town meeting warrant. Alright, so you have that in your packet, and yours is a preliminary, there are still some weight numbers to come in, but what we'll do is we'll go through the pages. It is Phil Curtis usually, but I haven't hired it this year.
Do you usually does it?
Yeah, yes.
Or do you, are there a pool of moderators that you?
You can't do it.
No, I just haven't called it all. I'm sure there is, I can reach out to MMA and ask. Okay, so we're gonna zero in on a few things, so Article three, that's your secret ballot referendum question. That's to raise an appropriate forty-eight thousand dollars to fund a new position. Your recommendation is approval five to zero, budget committee is non-approval three to one. The next one, the notes, Article twenty-two. That is, we made a corporate seventy-five thousand, the construction of the new gazebo and related workers who are part of the unstep balance to be transferred to the parks reserve account. That's where you have the approval and the budget meeting is non-approval three to one. Article twenty-five, at the bottom of the same page, is your difference in revenues and how that will appear.
So all of these are on the floor, none of these are on the ballot?
That is correct, Article three, the new position will be in the ballot. Article thirty-two is an administrative update, but your delinquent tax rate next year will be eight point five percent instead of, a seven point five instead of eight point five, which then means in Article thirty-three that abated taxes, prepaid abated taxes, will get paid back at three and a half percent interest. And then over to Article forty-two, we haven't really discussed this, but it came in with a recommendation of library trustees, and that is to reduce to see if the town will hope to change the library trustee term length to three years, beginning with terms expiring in the twenty twenty-six annual town meeting.
How long are they now?
Five.
Okay, yeah, no, that makes sense.
You know, three's difficult enough, now you've got five.
That's a long time.
So they've asked that we look to reduce that, so I thought it was appropriate to include that, and then Article forty-three, that's how the administration length will be available. To be back in the format, we'll get the red line, pop the out, I have it, if we go on to the website, the final three thirty-one website, and then we'll be producing these booklets. Not you producing, we have to do some, we'll produce those in house. That's when they get posted, we have to sign off and have them in every first file that they're actually posted, when you wear.
Is that TIF money, that, that does run out after a while.
The TIF money is good for forty years, if.
Forty years?
But the value of the pipeline continues to depreciate.
Right.
It's slightly, and it doesn't increase when other things necessarily increase. And when the mill rate drops, because values go up, they get a lower rate, so it's dissipating, it's not coming in the way that it used to, I mean, when we first, when I first started, it was a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five, and this year, same, one twenty, one twenty-five. So it's still there, it'll still be there, but especially as you see other large taxpayers if up in value, it obviously takes away from what their county is, or their obligation is, I mean, their valuable portability for the whole. Because they're at eleven million dollars, so if, if we've got a valuable eleven million dollars, but our assessment value is down at ninety-one percent, we have to reduce their value by ninety percent to send to tax. Because they're at eleven million dollars. So if, if we've got a value of eleven million dollars, but our assessment value is down at ninety-one percent, we have to reduce their value by ninety-seven to send to tax.
So do we need to turn the motion on?
It would be a motion to approve and sign of the twenty-twenty-five town meeting warrant.
I'm watching.
Motion, a second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody. Uh, other business? Did board have anything for other business? You have anything for other business? I sent you out the um select board town managers report by email today, in your packet. Please get back to me in a moment. And then the other thing is there are two decks here on the table in terms of town report cover. We could just give sentences certainly to be, I mean, official, we'd gain sentences on the topics you'd like to have. That would be appreciated. There's two really good ones.
I think I like B and B.
You say B?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
I like B.
Okay, Chuck, you seen them?
Yeah.
First one's good, too. I just, I feel like.
I, I thought so soon.
Yeah, that's all. You like that, Chuck?
Sure.
Okay.
See, I was excited.
No, that's good. Those are really good.
Long as the other door goes.
Yeah.
Oh, that thing's good.
We have to load them up cover or?
Yeah, so we're good.
Then we're just, we move to adjourn?
Yep.
I thought we had to prove this.
That's a motion, a second.
We're gonna find something to this tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll send them all to you. Uh. Right, so I have no more discussion. Uh, all those in favor?